Can you turn on my video, Dan? Says my camera's not working.
Yes, I didn't restrict video. Could run you up a run you up a Chromebook.
Well, I mean, I don't have to have video per se, as long as you can hear me.
Yeah.
They're okay with that. I mean, y'all, y'all seen my face before. Alright, so let's go ahead and get started. It's now six, it's still six o'clock on my watch. So please join, stand me, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivi- with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. In attendance, we have Directors Beach, Carrie, Penegas, Green, and myself, as well as the superintendent, Dr. Milton, and many others. So I thank you all for coming. Let's jump right into item two of our agenda, two A board comments. Director Green, you're first on my screen.
No comments at this time.
Thank you. Dr. Penegas.
You're muted, Dr. P.
Yeah, you're Dan, could we unmute him?
Yeah, you currently have the ability to mute unmute. Oh, I'll take a look real quick.
Carl, did you want to have your board comments?
Yeah, I wanted to just touch on a couple of things real quick. And just get a couple of things, I guess, off my chest. We had a challenging meeting, I guess, is the best way of saying it, last time. And I, you know, there was a couple, I've been in the board for a number of years, eight years now, and, you know, there's one of the things that you kind of learn doing this is you kind of have to have a thick skin. But one of the things I wanted to speak up to that, you know, I guess, got under my skin a little bit was kind of a sentiment by some, or comments by some, that, you know, this board operates in a hierarchical standpoint, or we separate ourselves from the people that we serve, or somehow think that we're above or beyond, you know, or any of that stuff. And, you know, as the people that are community mayor man, I know, this is, this is essentially a volunteer position. I mean, we we do this, certainly not for the glory, definitely not for the money. But because, you know, you see a need and fill a need, we, we all here have passions about providing the best educational opportunities that we can for the community that we live in, I mean, that we shop in, that we, everything. And, you know, to me, this is kind of the essence of what politics should be. It should be a local thing. It should be local people that you see at the grocery store and at the gas station and that hanky pies and, you know, and all those places around town. And you know, even, you know, we, I certainly know that we as a board, you know, go out of our way to engage stakeholders and talk to parents because we desperately need parents involved. We desperately want parents involved. If there's one thing that all of the data shows across, you know, any kind of educational paradigm that you look at for kids is that you need to have parents involved in order to have the best potential educational outcomes for, for kids. And we, we desperately want and need that. So to, to claim or to have the sentiment that, that we operate as bigger than or above than, or, you know, we've got it all figured out. I mean, other than Dr. Penegas, now that's even have a, you know, or not working in the educational profession, or have worked in the educational profession. So I guess I, I, I just wanted to, you know, just say that, you know, I've seen this board go out of its way many times to try to engage parents and talk to parents and stuff like that. And, you know, and I think there's, and this comes up all the time, and it'll even, I'm sure come up tonight, you know, when we open up public comment, you know, we, as, as a, as an officiating board, there is no RCW or law that we have to include comments from the floor, items from the floor in our agenda. But we do that because, again, we desperately want and desperately need parents to be connected to their kids' education and to, you know, if there's a challenge, if there's something that's going wrong, we, we certainly need to hear about that. And so there's all, I think there's a sentiment that just because during those items from the floor that we don't say anything that we aren't hearing or feeling or connected in any way. But, you know, either from the floor is for the public to make comments to the board, and we don't engage into a conversation in that setting because it's a meeting of the board in public, not a public meeting of the board. However, I, I personally, I'll speak for myself here. I, I'm sure even my detractors would say that I respond to every single email I get. If you have a question, if you have a concern, reach out to me. I can't tell you how many conversations I've had in the aisles of IGA, you know, about this or that. I mean, we, if you have a question and you want a direct response to it, and I know this goes for the whole board, reach out to us, email us. There's certainly many opportunities where we can be contacted. And, you know, if we don't have the answer, we can certainly forward you to the person that can. So I, you know, I in the height of all of the things that are happening right now, world education, stuff like that, I guess, I just don't want us to move from the point of everybody is operating from a place of wanting to do the absolute best they can. Right? There, there are no demons. There are no monsters hiding under the bed. You know, I, I, speaking for this board specifically, we're all coming at this from a, a deep desire to, to serve and to be the best that we can and to offer the best that we can. So, you know, while, while we can certainly disagree, and, and I encourage that, people that agree and disagree with us, I, I just don't want to lose sight that we care, and we're here because we care. And so there is no flexibility or opportunity for us to operate as a hierarchy in that world. So appreciate you letting me say that.
Thank you, Carl. Dr. Penegas.
Okay, can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm connected. I've been advantaged for being retired. I've been at Mountain Way quite a bit the last week or two, and I have, it's the school I've assigned to, and I asked to be assigned to it. And lots has, have been going on. And a little bit emotional. I have a grandson in kindergarten, and he had a great day today. But the I had no way, I don't think any of us would have expected the amount of enrollment. And I'm sure we'll find out more about it in detail tonight. But the fact that it, it did happen, and we'll see, like I say, more detail later. It's scary. I, I'm going to my, my own administrative experience, both in Washington and Arizona. But the, and, and Mr. Cruz has said, when he presented the budget before, he said, we're being a little conservative. And that proved to be really true. But, so I'm not, I'm not blaming him. I'm just wondering, it surprised me a little bit, but it also didn't, you know, you drive that one road to past where the football field and all these houses are pretty close together, but they're new. And that their people are going to be coming in there, not all kindergarten or anything. But the people, I, I was there yesterday for the meet the parent, meet the teacher, and I got to go all over the campus and talk to people. But the fact that there was so much need so late in the game, I lost a little sleep. My age is not, you know, takes a lot for me to lose sleep, but the I'm, and then I'm hearing very good things. And I met a couple of the people, one who was hired like Sunday night or something. And and I've talked to Josh about it. But I guess my, my not frustration, but my, using this as a teachable moment is, is there anything, we had some suspect that it might be a little bit more, but not like this, to when I I heard more than once yesterday, we have nine sections of kindergarten. We've never had that. The whole time I've been in Granite. I mean, talk about, you know, and I don't want to be dramatic, but that's a pretty big explosion. And I've had different, when I was a principal and were very involved in hiring. We had one of those, but it was only a section or two, but it was very late. It was right around Labor Day, and we had a sub for a while, and then we got some. So I'm sensitive to it only because when it gets closer and closer to school time, you know, Labor Day and the opening day of school, the pool gets, you know, doesn't get deeper. It gets more and more shallow. I met a couple of these people, like I said, they seemed great. They seem enthusiastic. And we're not the only district having this. I guess Snohomish is having it. So I'm not making fault of anyone. I think if it's possible, we've got some sort of strategy or some way of knowing in in July or early August to get some info on what could happen. But we can't invade people's, knock on their door, are you going to be coming to Mon- Mountain Way? But, so I know it's a conundrum. I know it's very difficult. But nothing is more important than who takes over in that classroom. And not just kindergarten throughout the grades. That's what we're really here for. And and some of these people, for different reasons that are available now, could be dynamite teachers. I hope they all are. But we were like in informational kind of vacuum or have our fingers crossed or whatever. And I, like I say, no one, and I think so many people have done, done really well, not, not just Josh and Marshall and Jennifer. But the the more info we can have, the more we can avoid this kind of a sudden need, and it's, it's pretty dramatic. And I'm, I think we have very good people who have done a lot to make this happen. And I'm sure hopeful that it continues. But this is not something you want to get hit like this just before school starts. And so I don't have a magic answer, but I have a deep concern. I care about this district big time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Penegas. Director Veach?
Sure, thank you. I actually talked to Director Carrie earlier today, and because the my board comments have been on my mind since the last time we met. For me, I mean, first off, it was my first meeting ever, being in the position of board chair, because Director Butler was traveling that day. So that was new and different. But for me, with the public comment, I absolutely appreciate the nine people that came and that that spoke on the various topics that, that they felt passionately about. And I did take notes what each person mentioned. And I hear you and I feel, I feel the emotion, I feel the passion, I feel frustration, whatever those emotions were that, that sounded like they were coming out. But it kept me awake a couple of different nights. I heard some of the words, I heard us as a board, I heard myself being called a coward, saying that we were fearful and more concerned, you know, with protecting my image than advocating for the students, or that I'm punishing the the few to protect the many. Those are some of the notes that I wrote down from that, and I thought about those, and I really did. I really took the time to digest that. And I wondered, like, do I say something, or do I just kind of let it slide and float down the middle and say nothing? But I want you to know that, first off, my background, like Director Carrie mentioned, is not entirely in education. To be fair, I studied education in college. And after doing student teaching, decided that was not the path for me. But it doesn't mean that I don't feel, I absolutely feel passionate about education. But I chose a career in IT. I work in cybersecurity and cyber intelligence, right? And I came to be interviewed for this board, you know, when a position opened up and was chosen, right? But then I ran for election, and the people in Granite Falls, I appreciate that they voted for me, they elected me, and they trust that I do my best to represent their interests. And I do. But when I think about like, I, I think it's important for me to say, I truly care about education, and I care about making a difference in this school district. And I show up and I put in the work, not because I'm fearful for my image, or because I want to act like a coward. That's not who I am. I show up and I do the work because I care. And Director Carrie was, he was maybe even more political just now than than I'm going to be. As school board director, I get paid 50 bucks, 50 bucks and no benefits. So I'm not in it for the money, and there's not prestige, and there's not image to be, to be saved. And you know what? I'm not being a coward right now. I'm here because I care. I'm here because I'm invested. And I'm here because I want to hear what parents have to say, because I think I'm doing the right thing. But I certainly am open to hearing what other people have to say. But just for instance, in that last meeting, we received an email about me saying something about other directors taking the time to read both handbooks and whatever. There was over 400 pages in that packet. I have a reputation among the school board directors of being the one that always reads every page. I'll be honest, I didn't get through the near 500 pages in the board packet single-handedly by myself last time. But I did spend the time, about two and a half hours preparing and a couple, it was about five hours of my time to earn my $50 before taxes. So less than minimum wage, no benefits. So please know that I'm not here for the prestige of the position or, or for my image. I'm here because I care. And I guess that's really important for me to get, get by. The other thing I thought about was that comment about punishing the many to protect the few. A school district is not a place, it's, a school board director is not a political position, and that's intentional. There's no, it's not a partisan position. You, we don't claim a political affiliation. The school is not the place for that, right? I see my position as it's a, the, the mask mandate is a public health concern. Students aren't even, a lot of the students aren't even of the age that they could get a vaccination. If, if it was available, it's not available, right? And so as I look at the data, I'm looking at the data, this is not Tina Veach, just thinking about it. I'm looking at the data from Dr. Bob Lutz from the state of Washington. I'm looking at the surge in hospitalizations and deaths of, of students, you know, zero to nine, 11 to 15, or 11 to 14, 15 to 19, I think it was, broken down, and the spike is real. We went from having like 287 cases one day to over 1700 cases the next day in Snohomish County. That's real data. When I think about the kids, now I'm going to be a mom for a minute. I think about the students. I think about a five-year-old or a six-year-old laying on the couch at home, sick with COVID, coughing, their little body like racked with that deep chest cough that comes with any kind of infection like that. And as a parent, there's never been a time I've seen my kid in that position that I wouldn't have done anything to take that away from them and suffer that myself, instead of watch their little body suffer through it. So when I think about the person that, that quoted to us that less than 1% of children die of COVID, that's not the stick I want to measure by. Because every single parent that did lose a child in that less than 1%, they're, they're suffering, right? They would do anything to have their child back. So I'm not going to measure for Granite Falls students based on number of children that died, or number of children that are hospitalized. I think about the students, I think about the children. Of course, I think about our staff and our administrators as well, but I'm here for the kids. I'm not going to lie. I don't want even one child to unnecessarily suffer because I made a decision, and my decision is not political. My decision is a public health decision. And I I appreciate the extra time that, that you allow me to do that. I, I guess, finally, I just want to say that legally, this district can't afford nor has any intention of challenging the governor's legal mandate. It's been very clear what is expected of school boards across the state. But I would invite families that feel passionately to invest their time and their money to challenge that mandate. But for us, we're a publicly funded school system. And that kind of challenge, as was mentioned in board comments last week, that would bankrupt this district, and that's not good for our students either. So know that as a director, I show up, I do the work, not because I want to be a coward, not because I'm protecting my image, but because I care about our students. I care about public health, and I really do think of the students individually. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Veach. My comments this evening, I really wanted to focus on the positive news of today. It's the first day of school. I was able to drop off kids at the middle school, Monte Cristo and Mountain Way, have a child, at least one child in each of those schools. And just to see those happy children, just, it really just made my day. I can't describe it. I'll try it out. At the middle school, I saw kids just excited to be there and start a new adventure as new sixth graders. At Monte Cristo, I saw, you know, my, my, my fourth grader just excited to be back among friends after missing, you know, almost 500 days of in-person learning with, with everyone. And then same with, with my first grader at Mountain Way, just the excitement she felt. And, and that's, that excitement I saw from my children, I saw on the faces of hundreds of other kids. So I just, in my board comments, want to say thank you. I said this in a Facebook Live video just yesterday, but I want to thank all the administrators, all the teachers, all the staff. I want to thank all the parents, want to thank, you know, everyone, pretty much the entire Grant Falls family, our community, for making this happen. Seeing those kids in school today, like my other, my fellow directors have mentioned, it hasn't been easy. There's a lot of struggles along the way. But for me, it was just exciting to see everyone in class today. So I want to say thank you to everyone who helped make that possible. Alright, moving on to item three, 3A, CTE according to the report that is presented by Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Director Butler. So you it's kind of hard to follow those comments, but I appreciate that what the board started off the meeting with. And, and part of the goal of CTE is always, let's focus on the kids and how well, how we can help them be the best they can be as they get to their 13th year as we move through. So in the report that I presented to you, I'm just going to kind of hit some quick highlights and, and maybe some things that didn't quite make the report and have changed. So on page three, we talk about the first CTE goal for this year, which is telling the story. And last week, we, I received training on the new webpage site that the district is moving towards. And so not only are we going to shift to that and get some more information on that webpage, but it looks like we'll have our own dedicated page to CTE. It will be listed under the school, school area is what I've been, been informed. So you'll see Mountain Way, Monte Cristo, you know, high schools, Crossroads, et cetera, et cetera. And then
Can I jump in real quick? Are you sharing your screen with us, or did you want to?
I wasn't sharing the screen with the report, if that's the question. Do you need me to?
I think it might be good. We do have a lot of people in attendance, like you could see if that's possible. I, I know it was in the board pack, but yeah.
Yep. Just give me two seconds to see if I can get that up. You can tell I'm rusty with the Zoom board meetings. So yeah. And Dan, do I have screen sharing position permission?
Yeah, be there right now. Oh, there, here we go.
Does that, can you see this? Okay?
You got it. Perfect. Thank you for letting me interrupt. Perfect. Thank you.
No, I, you know, I apologize. We should have had that up to begin with. One thing I want to point out on the, the front page is that down here, you can see that we, we've developed a new logo for our CTE program that's unique to us, and we're continuing to work on it. But that's what we want to try to move that forward for this year, as the Grand Falls CTE label and and piece for us. It's new. We went, again, in the pack, there's the, the district goals, and I'm moving through. Here's the first goal that I was talking about, was telling our story, and where it talked about increasing a webpage presence where what I was talking about is that we'll get on the new website, a, our own page underneath the school direction. So it will be CTE. And inside that, our goal, my goal is, is that by the end of this month, we'll have our, our, you know, welcome CTE page, et cetera. And that we're working on, we have eight pathways that are, we want to flush out in more detail, and we're going to try to get at least one done this month, hopefully two, and then one or two each month as we go through to, so that we can get everything up and running, you know, in the next four to five months. In the packet, and I'm not sure I can do this down here a little bit later, there is a link to a, to the Bellingham School District, where it links to the kind of, I thought, a nice model of demonstrating, hey, you know, here are the classes we offer, here's the pathway you can take, here are the jobs you'll have. And so we're going to kind of look to to model it after some of, you know, my colleagues' pages. So that's all going to be informational for parents, students, teachers, anybody that's interested in that. So again, increasing our page and our webpage presence, telling our story of what we're doing, and all the good things we're, we're, we're working on. Down here under the student outreach, I just want to point out that, you know, to get information about what I think it's important that we know what students are interested in. We, and part of the way we're going to do that is utilizing the the, the platform that we have, Zillow, Skyward, and other platforms that we presently use at the middle school and the high schools to, and Skyward, and to track with the interest of students and where they want to do, where their occupation is, or what they desire to do in their 13th year. So that's, that's something we want to make sure. And we talked about doing some career fairs or exploratory expos. And so our goal, my goal is, is that the seventh and eighth grade expo, we're going to try to put that together in November, and then the student parent night, which would talk about all our CTE programs, et cetera, et cetera. We're looking to shoot for the April of '22, which is right around the time the high school's probably going to register for new, for next year, and, and the middle school kids looking at what you're doing. And then for parent night, for the, as the ninth graders come up, is usually around in February, we would have something available for them at that time. Again, promoting our CTE programs and the benefits that the students can get. Okay? Development and community business partners. As I flush this out a little bit more, you know, As I flush this out a little bit more, you know. My, my goal is to, to, um, get. Look at ways to get involved in our the communities that surround us that where we can, we can, uh, develop business partners that can help our students by either. Possibly setting up internships or apprenticeships or et cetera, et cetera, getting, you know, getting them involved with our district. Besides just the Granite Falls group, um, you know, my goal is to get at least one to two business partners. You know, before the end of the, at the year end that we don't presently have. Again, we haven't been doing this, so it's. We're setting, you know, we think realistic goals, but I'm hoping that we could develop more and get that rolling as we branch out into the communities around us. Well, um, on the next one, develop avenues utilizing middle school building. I've already reached out to Karen Landry at Everett Community College to talk to her. To set up communications, beginning communications about, hey, how can we partner with the Everett Community College about offering some night courses? Hopefully taught by our staff in our, uh, the middle school building, getting our community, the option to come in and utilize that, that, uh, good facility. And helping them gain knowledge and move on, et cetera, et cetera. Um, if we need to, we'll reach out to the community and say, hey, here are some possible classes we would offer. What would you be interested in in doing? So we're starting already to look at that to see if this is going to be possible and. And explore other avenues. If we can't go the community service or community college route, you know, we'll look at other ways. Working with our community to open it up. My goal is to get it opened up to our community in the second semester of this year so that we have adults. Students the like utilizing it after school hours in a positive, uh, learning manner. So as we roll into goals, that was kind of end of the goals or some action items, preliminary actions for goal one, goal two. I started off focusing on a STEM report that we get as CTE directors in the Snohomus County. That we utilize, which helps us delineate what are the, you know, as we go through the year, what are the, uh, industries? We're going to opening, what they're anticipating for openings annually. And so I just listed the top 10 or top nine, excuse me. Of industry in Snohomus County. When we look at this for our students, I look at King County. Skagit County and Snohomus County because we have our kids go. Up, you know, all through that corridor. So we look at all of those, but this was just the Snohomus one. Again, it's just for your information. Uh, as, as we're building out in doing what we're doing, uh, new offerings, uh, I think it's important and I've been asked by, um. Some of the board members, what are you doing? What did we do this year? You know, today's September 1, what's different and new to help our kids in CTE wise? And so I tried to capture a little, some of the things that we're doing this year that we weren't doing last year that we're trying to move our programs forward. And part of those are at the high school, we're offering five classes of culinary arts. This year where we haven't offered any and for quite a period of time, we're offering into the computer programming this year, which we haven't offered for the last couple of years. Uh, and we're offering again for, it's been quite a few years into the business for the first time. And so those are three new classes that we have in our curriculum that we have kids enrolled in today. That we're, uh, trying to move the program forward. At the middle school. We're offering a seventh grade tech class. It's going to, going to explore utilizing some of the technology equipment that we have at the middle school, you know, the, um. The printer, the 3D printer, um, the printing on the bottles, you know, labeling, you know, those type of things. Uh, we also include, uh, seventh grade agriculture, food and natural resource class. Which is a science class that utilizes our ag program or or plants. As the method to teach it. This matches up really well with the high school, um, plant biology class that we have. It matches up with our ag program at the high school. Uh, one of the rules that OSPI has. Or I should say not OSPI, but FFA has is that if the student is not enrolled in FFA either at the seventh, eighth grade. Or the high school level, then they can't compete. And this will, for the first time, this will allow our seventh and eighth graders that opportunity. And we've already had some kids take advantage of this so that they could compete. In the eighth grade, we're going to offer a natural resource class. This matches up. Really well if we, uh, as we look to grow things into environmental science. Um, and, you know, which we have AP, environmental science, et cetera, et cetera. So the possibility of growing this. Into another pathway that we presently don't delve deeply into yet i- is there. But again, these are science classes for. For the seventh and eighth graders that are utilizing some of the framework for the, the. Uh, for those guys, uh, and the. Last two stats in this area, I wanted to point it was, uh, presently, we have 946 students taking CTE courses in the first semester. And this will be plus or minus as kids shift around in the first couple of weeks, but that's more than we've had in the past. Utilizing and take advantages of some of our new pathways, you know, classes and courses that we're offering as well as some of our old ones. And, uh, the middle school number was incorrect. I re, we recalculated and we really have 664 students that are taking it. And obviously we don't have 664 students, but some kids can take two classes or will take multiple, especially if they're in the wheel. At the, uh, middle school. So that's how we get more than the total number of students that are even at the middle school. And again, these are just seventh and eighth grade students. Um. I'm counting because OSPI at the same level, we don't count, uh, sixth graders. So the rest of this information here is just going into more depth about those new courses and what we were offering. One piece that, uh. Wasn't quite included in this that I think is important words. I'm, I'm really, one of our goals is to increase our work-based learning. Opportunities for our students. Presently, we have it at crossroads in open doors and we want to continue that and grow that and do that. But one of my goals is to by second semester, because we have to get the process going. Is to see how we can grow this at the high school. So we have high school students given that opportunity to again, explore internships, apprenticeships. And get ready in the field that they're interested in. Can we get them the opportunity? To do that as they get ready for their 13th year. And explore, we're going to continue to increase, you know, uh. Dual enrollment. And, um, dual credit. And all those aspects also with the community colleges, um. To do and. I'm going to jump down to program steady evaluation here. This is, this not only meets OSPI's, uh, needs for our Perkins reports and for other. Requirements at OSPI, but it's a, it's a great way for us to, for me to get with each. Of our programs and find out, hey, what worked well, what didn't work well? What are our goals for this year? Where are we headed this year? And I'll be in the next, in the month of September and October, I'll be meeting with our. Our, uh, program department heads and and going over this review with them to set a, to set the bar for this year. And as we, as we reflect from last year, this ties into also with the vertical teaming, you know, we're working with. We got agriculture at the middle school to help us grow this vertical team process. We'll continue to do vertical teaming with the. Middle school and the high school, contrary to some beliefs. Uh, around is that that worked very well last year and I think we moved forward in a lot of positive. Mr. B. Is, you know, Mr. Bean Keen is working well with, with myself and the high school and and we've got. You know, exciting new, I'm excited about our new manufacturing teacher, Josh. Um, he's already, you know, going to reach out and there's some exciting things I think are going to come down during this year as we work together as a seven, 12 program. Uh, to make sure we're, we're promoting everything through. You know, we're, we're looking at possibly doing an electric engine into the eco car. This year as opposed to diesel, again, off of a recommendation. From one of the board members. So we're exploring those avenues to see which way we want to do this as we're in the first day of school. It's not quite. Criteria yet. So I'm moving down to goal three. I'm not trying to go fast. I'm just trying to cover it and I know you have a large board meeting. This goal is important, uh, in one aspect that, that, uh, we didn't, I didn't include on this that I wanted to cover that I picked up at the latest conference from, uh. Some other CTE directors is that. What I'm going to do this year is, um, for those of you who aren't familiar, we call it, uh, the. The general advisory committee, which is made up of advisors from our community, our teachers and administration. All meet together and we cover variety of different things that OSPI needs us to cover in and handle inside of it. One thing that we haven't done since I've been here is really have just an advisory committee meeting with me. The CTE director. So I'm going to try to institute that. It's been successful in every places where I just meet with the, the community advisors. And, and talk to them about how we doing, what are we going to do, how we grow. It's, it's presently, it's pretty hard to do that inside the GAC meeting timeframe. We already take almost two hours just to get through some stuff. So I want to meet with them separately. So. And we're going to, it's a big push this year as far as my office is concerned is that. Each program will have advisory meetings all the way down to seventh grade, including crossroads as they're, they're incorporating some new courses. For new people there teaching CTE courses that we're going to have advisory committees and CTSOs. That, um, which are the student organizations, uh, to get our kids involved in these programs. And so that, um. I'll have that opportunity to meet with them and say, hey, are we on the right track? You know, give me feedback. They meet with the advisory teams, meet with their teacher and then I want to get all of them together to meet with me and then have the GAC meeting. So we're going to, we're going to explore and we're going to develop, um. That process to and tweak it to make, to make, to improve our, uh, you know, our community involvement and information to make sure we're reflective of. The, uh, uh, present needs for some of our CTE pathways. And so, and, and with that, I mean, we talked about third year goal, fifth year goal that's in here and I'll show that just because it's in here. As part of our presentation, but with that, I'll be happy to take any questions about the presentation.
All right, directors, uh, any comments or questions you'd like to have, uh, with Mr. Davis? Director Beach? You're muted.
And you may have to unmute her.
There it is. I think I'm unmuted.
Yes.
Oh, good. I don't know why I can't. What I did, but anyway, all right. So here's my. Hold on, what did I do? There we go. Um, so I have, I was writing furiously as you were talking, Kevin, so I have several questions. But, um, can we go kind of back to maybe page three, I think it was here? So we talk about telling our story and I think that that's a decent goal. Um, and I understand that we're getting a new, a new webpage, right? But I, I think our goal number two for me is our goal, right? And that is the preparatory pathways. Before, because we have so many people in attendance, can you just briefly? Talk about the three class requirement for graduation? Like, why is this important that we're doing this alignment that you're spending the time on? I think it's important to. To talk about that, that graduation requirement, right? Um, can you just briefly give that information as background?
Sure. And, and, yeah, make sure I catch it all. But, um, so. There's two graduations requirement inside of that, that CTE piece. One is that you're required by, um, you know, state law that you have to take ACT class to graduate. That, you know, that's the basic thing that you have to do. The second piece that where this CTE pathways really is helpful is it kicks in on the, uh, state testing model. So every sophomore, sophomore up until COVID, every sophomore would take the SBACK test in math and English language. And they would have to pass those two tests to meet the state and district graduation requirements. So if a student does not pass those tests, they, the state a couple of years ago came out with a law, 1599. That demonstrates, that said that here are other ways for students to demonstrate their knowledge in, in these areas. One of the other ways to do that is by taking two consecutive, two courses that are within a pathway. Uh, program of CTE. For example, you could take, um. Leadership and student store. You could take, um. Core plus one and core plus two. You couldn't necessarily at this moment in time for us, you couldn't necessarily take. Student store in core plus one because they're not in the same program. So as we're aligning things and getting things offered and giving kids more opportunities within those programs. We wanted to make sure you have at least one to two programs that they could take. The other emphasis from OSPI is starting to turn towards it. There's nothing in the law that says we have to do this, but what we want to do is grow, especially at the high school. That you would take what's called an explorer, exploratory course, which is allows me, hey, let me go in and see what this is like, you know. You will like culinary arts? I mean, is this what I really want to do? And if I get really excited about this, then what we want to do is move you towards a preparatory class. Which would get more involved into how can I help prepare you to go out and get this as a job? So these are, those are just two ways that the, um, CTE courses. Impact, um, graduation for students and many students are across the state because they tracked this the last two years. They've seen a, um. Across the state, the CTE pathway has grown as way, as kids use as an alternative to the testing to get it to, uh. Uh, for the graduation. Uh, I assume, is that what you wanted?
Yeah, I, I guess I thought it was a three class requirement, but maybe it's the, the exploratory plus two preparatory. Maybe that's what I, why I was thinking three. Could that be?
We would love to have you take three, but the state law only says, yeah.
I remembered looking at that. So, um. For the classes and for the, um. For the two class. Ex, uh, preparatory offerings that we have now at the high school. I guess, how should I say this? If a student were to take a class at the middle school. Have we created a pathway where they could take a second class at the high school? And those build upon each other or do both classes have to happen at the high school level?
Um, is. That's a great question. As long as the class gets high school credit. Then it can be counted. So if the class at the middle school and right now I'm hard pressed off the top of my head to say that any of the middle school CTE courses. Have a high school credit tied to it. Then you would still have to take the two at the high school. Um, as we explore, what we're hopeful is like in technology. I know that Mr. Bean Keen and Mr. Cash are committed to, um. This year for our eighth graders to increase their basic knowledge of technology. So that we can start them at a higher level in that beginning. And I say beginning class or exploratory class at the high school, but that we can get them to go farther now because of they have a. We're not trying to teach at basic level at the high school. So that's where it really helps us. And, and I'll go one more and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm long-winded is that at the manufacturing level, um. Mr., uh. Van Jensen, uh, we've already had the conversation and Mr. Gallagher, we're doing that vertical teaming. We had the conversation last year and it's just going to continue is that we're teaching the beginnings of core plus one. Down at the middle school. So that may be that we might be able to get rid of the, um. Into the manufacturing class at the high school, jump straight to core plus one, or. We can move a kid along faster and we change core plus one to really start second semester core plus one, first semester core plus two. Because the program is 520 hours over the, the length and that's that third year piece. So. You may not get the high school credit and move you towards that graduation pathway piece, but our goal is to. Um, have the middle school program get you further along so we can get you further along at the high school and get you into the more preparatory range.
Okay. I think what I'm driving at, so. Here's my concern. I'm glad that you got to it in the middle of the piece. I feel I've been involved with CTE be in this district for two years before I even interviewed to be on the school board and I've been here, I don't know, two and a half, three years. As well. So four, five, six years now I've been doing CTE and I feel like. We have been, not even feel, we have been circling around. We talk and we think about and we meet and we talk some more. And we have a beautiful building that our community has funded and I want to be sure that we're getting the most bang for the buck. We have teachers that are ready to teach. We have a facility that is top notch. And now we need to dot the I and cross the T to make sure that everything we're doing. And now we need to dot the I and cross the T to make sure that everything we're doing. Is getting the best from that. What I'm driving at is what is the standard that we have to make sure that we're aligned to? And how do we show? That every class we're teaching is aligned to that standard, do you have that somewhere? Is that something you could send to me?
Let me take a look and see, I don't have it at my fingertips. When Steve Carter was here, he was starting to try to develop some of what I think you're asking and that.
What I'm trying to get away from is a gunshot approach of, well, that might seem interesting, kids might like that versus. I guarantee that this is aligned to what the thou shalls from above, either from the state or federal level. We get the thou shouts in order to, you know, ensure alignment, ensure progress, academic progress, things like that. So I want to be sure that they're not only just flashy and fun classes, but that we're. That we're checking the boxes in teaching. The skills that we should be teaching in those classes, because the, you've heard me bang this drum before. The curriculum, the CTE curriculum, how do we know? That what we're doing is the right thing, right? And so I know that we have some standards from above that we're supposed to be meeting. So the classes, before we even bite off more and create more CTE classes. How do we ensure that what we're doing now is the right thing? Does that make sense? That's what I'm trying to make sure of.
I think so, in in my answer.
I understand you probably don't have it on your desk in front of you, but I'm just wondering if you could send that to me.
I will try after the meeting to send you the, my quick answer to this and then I'll dive into it more outside is. Every CTE class is approved through the OSPI, through the frameworks. And every framework has standards for both science, math, right, it's already built in there. So the the question is, in my mind. So we we do have standards, we are being held accountable, we are, OSPI, trust me. They go over them with a fine tooth comb and tell us, you know, hey, you're not got this, you need that, et cetera, et cetera. And they have other requirements too, you know, with CDS, the the question. In my mind is that. In our classes, we are teaching this.
That we can show the community that and the parents that that. We're aligned and we're doing and we're making progress and and we have acceptance or blessing or whatever the word is. From our two or three class in the case of manufacturing.
Right.
Yeah.
So I.
I can, I can see Director Carey has his hand up, so maybe I'll take a break for a second and I'll let Director Carey ask a few.
I'll work on that and try to get something to you.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin, so a a couple of things now, I've said this before, I'll say it again, just because we've. We've got a little bit larger audience than we had at our board retreat, you know, CTE. Our STEM building, you know, to me is our our ticket to really do something and provide something special. Here in this district that that no other school district can can do. Or is able to do to the veracity and the level that I I think that we can do it. I think it's going to be the thing that sets us apart, it's that it's going to be a driver for, you know, kids being extremely successful. As you talked about their thirteenth year and I'm I'm personally, and I I'll just speak for myself, you're willing to do. Whatever it takes to make sure that that this area is as successful as possible and. And and we do as much good in this area as we possibly can, because I I think it can't do so much good. So I thought your report was really good, I I just had a couple of questions. That I and I wanted to expand on kind of what Director Veach was saying. Because I, the hard and Director Veach, you're feel free to unmute yourself if 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 I'm not articulating what I'm hearing. And I think where you and I are in agreement on this is, you know, we have a lot of cool stuff. And and cool things that we can do in the steam building at the middle school. Like I understand, you know, we can do screen printing and three D printing and all that stuff, that's wonderful, it's cool, it brings kids in, ignites that that. Oh, man. I guess the part of it that I'm that I'm missing and I don't necessarily see is, and I think Director Veach is asking this, okay, so what? You know, that builds into what or that pathway goes to what, or how do we continue that? Oh, man, I'm super fired up about screen printing on church. Now I'm in ninth grade, what what is that kid doing that's that's building on that type of thing? That's the piece of the puzzle that I'm kind of missing, that go off of the agree, Director Veach, or is that?
Yeah, that's exactly, in fact, it just occurred to me that maybe what I need is a flow chart. I don't know what what I'm looking for here, but that's what you're saying is right, yeah.
Okay.
How do I know that what I'm doing today will flow into? What tomorrow?
And not that you need me to explain it in different words, but that's what that's that in my own head and heart, that's what I'm feeling. I just wanted to see if you and I were on the the same page there. So, you know, when I, we've done a lot of, you know, even before we built the steam building, we've done a lot of talking and and kind of outreach and stuff like that. So in in kind of your your goal one, one of the things that I guess I I just want to be clear on is. When you talk about student outreach, and I think constant consistence student outreach is a great thing. But ha, don't we have a ton of outreach and a ton of feedback from students already on kind of what they want to see and 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 all of that stuff? Are we, and I'm I'm hoping that we've used that to kind of been mold and create these new CTE offerings that you've done over the summer? Is there, I mean, that's kind of a consistent, and you do say year long, but are you, do you feel like there's holes there? Is that why we're continuing that or just because that's a piece of your building block?
Let me see if I can answer that question this way, and you, I know you hold me to to it. So when I first came to the district, I met with every senior before they went. Through to graduation and talked to them about what's their thirteenth year plan is, where are you going to go, what do you want to do and stuff like that? And again, that was six, seven years ago. And what we, what I discovered was in those conversations was, I have a lot of stu, we have a lot of students. That were interested in nursing or the medical profession. That were really wanting to do that as that thirteenth year staff. We offered. We offered biology, we offered chemistry, just like, but there was nothing more centered towards what they wanted. And they would go off into Snow Isle, which has a wonderful program and still does. So having listened to what they wanted, we started to build sports medicine, biomed, anatomy. Those type of things, because that's what the kids were saying they wanted to go to. And so as we built them, they have grown in, you know, and. We've gotten kids that have gone on and actually gone into those professions afterwards with that. So when I talk about making sure, yes, we get, that's why I say we're going to use Zillow and and Skyward. Because we do that, we go out and we ask a question, but you know. This year's ninth grade class is different than last year's ninth grade class, this year's seventh grade class is different than last year's seventh grade class. All the classes are different because of COVID, so they're what they, we thought they may want. I want to make sure that we continue to emphasize, hey, where are you interested in, where can we help you? And on the other side of that coin is if we're able to do. Internships and apprenticeships, which I do feel are important or work based learning is. If you want to become, and I've told this story before, and I'll tell it very quickly, we had a student last year that wanted to become a plumber. So instead of putting him in, you know, he has no opportunity to go out and to be a plumber right now, I mean. Yeah, we're going to teach him how to measure, we're going to teach him how all that great stuff. But we were able to get him into an apprenticeship or an internship working with a plumber. So that we hate, you know, and and I have no idea, unfortunately, he's a senior and it was towards the end of the year. But first time he crawls under the house and and has to deal with that, he may go, I don't want to do this anymore. And so we've helped him make a decision, or he crawls under the house and he loves it, and he wants to go on and what's his next step, and then we can help guide him. So that's why I want to make sure we're keeping abreast of what the students are saying and are interested in, and that way we're always. I don't want, I want to see tweaking our program, because you can't just start a program and stop a program on a dime. But that we're tweaking our program to fit what our students are kind of saying they're interested in doing. You know, and and that's kind of where I'm trying to get that information. To make sure that whatever we're going to plan in the second semester for next year. That we're, you know, we're doing what kids are interested in, where we can go to help them get that. And, you know, we have to be the adults and, you know, every kid wants to be a fireman, okay, well. We, we're not going to offer fire safety because that's offered in skill set, and you get what I'm saying, we'll be the adults and go through that. But that's the intent behind these goals is to utilize that information. In more depth and to help guide us in a positive manner.
Makes sense, so, but the the, I guess the point is, the feedback that we've already gotten from kids. From students, we're we're still digesting and using that, right? I mean, we're, we're using that to develop programs and stuff like that, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're we're. We're kind of growing in that, but I I appreciate your response there. Under the 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 header of Develop Community Business Partners, which I think lines exactly with kind of your. Your story related to the plumber and stuff. I know we have, you know, some really good relationships already, how are you? I understand lining out the the why, but how, how, how are you going to develop those relationships?
And I hate to say this, but in the sense that I haven't had an opportunity to do this before, so I'm kind, you know, my. The the off shot is to join the the Chamber of Commerce in Everett or Marysville. As well as, you know, Granite, to meet those opportunities, to meet those business people, to reach out also. I'm also part of the Sno miss county. STEM process, which has business people tied to it. You know, and and so is to to reach out outside of us and explore avenues that we haven't. I'm not saying they're not traditional, but we haven't really explored them to the extent that we need to. And to see what we can cultivate that way, and I'm sure there's other ideas that we'll come up with, but those are the ones just right off. Those are something we're going to try, that I'm going to try to do in month of September is, you know, join those organizations, try to get to. To their meetings and introduce us and get to know some people.
I got one more, and then I see Dave Green's hand up, I mean, I've got other questions, but just just one more. The one part of this, and I I appreciate you making note that that you're going to. Ensure that our, that you reach to our special needs kids. Emphasizing the inclusion of our special student populations and all the career fairs. I think that's wonderful, that's that's right where we need to be as we're looking through an equity lens and and, you know, all students all day. I guess my question is, is, you know, one of the things that. We, or or how do you envision reaching out to kids? That don't attend that student, because I imagine those Explorer Day Echo, or the exploratory expos, those are all on student parent night, right?
That, no. Some of them are because they, we purposely matched them up to that activity. Because we know the parents and the kids will be there, but some of the others. Student. Just trying to, some of the other student expos that where I'm like the 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 career fairs. I would like to work with the principals to see if there's any chance that we can maybe offer them. Right after school, during the school day, you know, give the kids an opportunity that they can go do these things. Without going home and coming back and let them get excited, so because we don't want to. And again, I haven't talked to the principals about how we might do this, this is all in that building stage. But where my real concern is, I don't want, I don't want, as you well know, I don't want to lose my my base to on the bus.
Right.
I want to get those kids in there and and given students an opportunity to maybe choose to go watch, listen to business people. Speak as opposed to going to maybe a their current class, it can be a good choice for kids. And so we get them excited about what they're seeing as the hope, and then we follow through with it as we go on. So it's not always tied to the parent conferences, but we want to also have that so that we get the parents included.
Yeah, because I I I guess my my thought was is there, you know, there's a, I would venture to say, you know, pretty large. Population of of students that. Don't think that they want to go down that path, or don't think they're interested in CTE or, you know, or. You go home on the bus or something like that, so I'm hoping that there is some sort of outreach that we're doing. Either via, you know, word of mouth or other students or, you know, or possibly, you know, I know when. Even a billion years ago, when I was in high school, like there was, you know, like, like a fair kind of thing where, you know, during the school day. You go and you're like, hey, we're the, we're, we do woodworking, you know, those types of things, so. Just to try to immerse and try to get as many kids that, you know, might go, huh, I I I don't know, I'll give that a try as possible. Not just the kids that are like, oh, yeah, I know, but that was plumber, I'll be a plumber, you know, that type of thing, you you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I I believe so, and and I've done that at one school that I was at where we actually during the school day. We, it was right around, again, that February registration time, we rotated all the kids through all the CTE. Programs and and I went, I got to weld a bead, you know, I got to, you know, cut a board, you know, just that quick fifteen, twenty minutes. Just for kids to go, well, I didn't even know the shop existed, and I'm a senior at high school. Et cetera, to doing some of those things, so that that also is part of what we were talking about is to. To expose the kids to to all the programs.
Go ahead, Director Green.
I was just going to say, can you hear me in there?
Yeah.
I was just going to say, thanks for the information here, I appreciate it, I was also concerned about the website, I. Tried to find your email and it could find it nowhere on. The website, so I'm excited to hear that the CTE is going to have their own. Area where you can put your information and be more transparent, and I'm looking forward to also, hopefully you put some pictures of the. Current students doing the different projects and appreciate it, thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you, Director Green.
Director Veach, do you want to go? I had one or two more questions.
I'll let you go, I just have one thing to, a comment at the end, but go ahead.
Yeah, so on your, on your goal two, Kevin, you say preparatory, and I read this a couple of times, I just want to make sure I understand. You say preparatory pathways for the twenty one, twenty two school year, seventy percent of all populations of seventy twelve students will enroll in the CTE course. Improving their readiness for the thirteenth year experience. So. But if my understanding is correct, doesn't. The the thou shalls, don't they say every kid has to be enrolled in in one CTE course? So isn't that kind of self fulfilling goal, or am I understanding that wrong?
You may be not understanding it incorrectly in your assumption, my thought was. Yeah, I I get what your point is, and I don't think I took that into account, my my thinking was. A second year class, if that makes sense, since every kid has to take, take one at high school for graduation purposes. My thought is, we we want to get them to the second year class, so thank you for pointing that out, but. Yeah, it would be a pretty easy goal to reach if I just said one, one class during your four years. Because you have to graduate.
So can you clarify that a little bit more than in in a future update and then? So the, also, I I'd love to have some, just some data along with that, so what is the current percentage? Right, and then, you know, what, obviously, what percentage are we trying to go through? But not only percentage, just, you know, student numbers too, because in in another area. Below, you know, when you're talking about the new offerings and stuff like that, you give me numbers of students, but not percentages. So if I've got both of those, it allows me to kind of compare and 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 understand that.
Yeah, so the the next time I present, which I would assume it was either going to be close to December, January, you know, and so. Well, we'll have a chance to to get better data and I'll make sure we include those for you.
Then down on page, so I'm now on page eleven of twelve of your report, you mentioned. This meets OSBI requirements for Carl Perkins Grant, just quick. Synopsis, what is the Carl Perkins Grant?
So Carl Perkins is a federal grant. The feds give every state a certain amount of money, and then the state doles that money out according to your size of your school, et cetera, et cetera. Presently, Granite Falls gets about ten to eleven thousand dollars in Carl Perkins money, which is not very much for what they ask you to do. But where the state really is moving is that the the requirements that you have to have. Or the information that you provide for the Carl Perkins Grant is going to be used for other I grants. And other forms of state funding, so if you haven't applied for Carl Perkins. You're not going to be available for these other pots of money and these other things, they also take the information that we give in the Carl Perkins. Grant, and so you do the grant, and then at the end of the year, like right now, I'm doing the car workers review for twenty twenty one. And they take that information, they upload it to the to the feds, and it's used as part of the state reporting back on how we're dealing with. CTE, school to work, you know, those those issues, so it's. Uh, CTE, school to work, you know, those, those issues. So it's, it's a very, it's becoming more and more important. That you have done this step and they're encouraging whether you get one dollar or, you know. You know, fifty thousand dollars that you need to, to do, to do these reports.
Got it. Okay. So that's something that we currently get and something that we're, we, we need to continue to provide an offering so that we can continue to get it. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. I have to reapply for it every year.
Okay. All right. And then I, on the last page, twelve of thirteen. Um, you, you, can you talk me through that third year CT goals? You say District CLNA. I'm so horrible with acronyms. What does CLNA stand for? Talk to me what, what you're telling me there.
So the CLNA, and I'm not going to remember exactly what the, the letter stand for, but it's your. Basically, it's what we do for Carl Perkins. It, it's, um, a very arduous report that is. Designed to lead the district into looking at what is, uh, important for your community. So what job focuses are you? How is your equity in your building? How are you handling? You know, the special population, wh- what, what preparatory classes and what other things are you doing? Based on data from the STEM job force. That you're offering and, you know, how are you meeting these goals? It's a federal, it's a federal form that the state has developed for us. That's used in other states to report out the information to them. It's, uh, um, gosh. I think ours is twenty to thirty pages. I share the CLNA every year with the, um, with our community. Our GAC committee. And so it's, it's gone over with, you know, it's part of what we have to cover and go over that we make sure, hey, this is what we've, we've done and. And for this report, so it's, it is. If, if this last year was the, the first year that we had to really develop and doing it and the state department. Or the OSPI is, uh, wanting to, to flush it out further and further and get more involved in it as we go through. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I, so I, I guess I, so when you call that a third year CTE goal, do you mean twenty-two, twenty-three? Or are you talking twenty-three, twenty-four? I guess I'm just trying to understand when you say third year, what do you mean?
For me, it's, it's probably. Twenty-three, twenty-four. And it's because it's also when the state is going to say, at least that's what we're being told. You have to have this, because we didn't do like question number two last year. So now you have to do questions, so we'll have to have it all fully flushed out. We're going to revisit it. We're going to have updated numbers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Got it. So is it possible to have, and it doesn't have to be certainly as detailed as your twenty-one, twenty-two, but is there. A way for you, just quick synopsis, you are, let's call it your second year CTE goal, just for me to know, okay, we're doing all of these things. And then, you know, the summer of twenty-two, we're going to, you know, we're take all of this and, and create these and then, you know, here's where I see it. Twenty-two, twenty-three, or, or where we need to go. Could you just, and it could be just a bullet point like that, but just so. I understand the bigger picture of looking a year out.
Got it.
Or a little bit over.
Yeah, so I'll go back and, and readjust that and then you, you'll see it and you'll tell me if we get it, but I'll, I think, yes, we can do that.
Perfect. Okay, I'll shut up, Director Beach.
All right, so as I always joke about, I'm being a Google search away from being an expert. I'm here to say that it's comprehensive local needs assessment is what CLNA stands for.
Thank you.
So it says Perkins V Comprehensive, so I'm not certain if that's Perkins five.
Yeah.
Or, I don't know what the V is, if it's an initial or a Roman numeral, but comprehensive local needs assessment. So mystery solved. All right. Um, I think the last thing I wanted to call out and I, I wish that this had maybe been included in the report, so for the next. Version of this, I, I hope that you'll be able to include it. But I, I want to give a, a kudos and a shout out to, um, to the staff in the, and. Uh, Dave Bianchini at the middle school, because I went to their open house last night. And I learned about their, a, their farm to table, um, CTE classes, which is. Josh Van Jensen, um, is doing in manufacturing, they're working on. Using their math skills to build planter boxes, right? And then John Brockman's class is. Working on the plant science, like we talked about, and actually growing things. Feeding into Colleen Mace's culinary, where they're taking everything from the boxes they build and the things they grow straight into the kitchen and. And even the marketing in farm to table is interesting to our students. The same thing we were, I was talking to, um, Mr. B and we were talking about, it's really ag science, right? But I said, it's in the marketing, because if you say ag science and a thirteen or a fourteen year old thinks you want me to become a farmer. Suddenly they're like, eh, that doesn't sound interesting, but now it's like, oh, cool. I get to measure this thing, build this thing. Grow this thing, do this thing, but the whole time they're learning math and science in order to make it happen. So I appreciate the effort of the staff there to. Put together a class like that, that takes them throughout the year as the kids go through their wheel. Of, you know, um, electives and just give them a little bit of time to make some adjustments there. So I just wanted to give a kudos to the staff there and also I, and I, I did not contact Bridget ahead of time, but. I want to say I go over to the track at the middle school pretty often in even first thing in the morning. And so I know they're doing some amazing things at Crossroads Open Doors, um, in the back with the. The things that they're growing out there and I see staff and, and I've seen students out there, so I, I know that CTE is happening in our district. And I hope that you'll take the opportunity to call that out and highlight some of those great successes, because we have some really cool things happening here. But unless you're in grades six through twelve, you may or may not know about it, right? So thanks for, thanks to the staff and the administrators that support them for, for really. Picking up the ball and rolling with it, um, here in Granite Falls and making it better for our students today, like the things we're doing today. Um, yeah, that was, oh, and of course, I'm going to take one last opportunity to beat the drum of curriculum alignments. Um, all the way, especially like we've made the investment in robotics four through eight. But I'm not sure where that points to. Uh, nine through twelve, right? So I think, um, again, then this is to Director Kerry's same question. I think that that would be maybe a. A solid example of, I'm not sure. What our plan is with that, like we've made a solid investment and we're, we're bringing, you know, math, science, robotics down to even the youngest. The younger kids that are invested, but where are we going with it? Um, so yeah, I'll just bang that drum one last time. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you very much, um, uh, Mr. Davis. Um, I appreciate, uh, you answering the questions there. Um, I know it can be hard when they just kind of, uh, come at you, um, so appreciate, uh, your efforts there, so. Let's move on to item three B, business report, that's prepared by, uh, Marshall Cruz. Um, is there anything to add to that report?
I think, uh, just briefly speaking to enrollment, because I think that's something that we're all kind of curious about right now. Um, our official calendar for our K-12 is.
I'm sorry, Marshall, could somebody share, um, his report so that those that are watching online could, could see the report?
Uh, let's see if I could share this. I've got like, I've got three screens open, um.
You're a power user.
I am. Let's see if I can.
I think I can do it if you can. Oh, you got it.
Okay, so I'm sharing this out of PowerPoint, um, so I'm not going to go into presentation mode. I'll just kind of scroll through the slides. Um, when I created this report, um, I just wanted to highlight that. Last year, the twenty-twenty-one school year, we had two thousand and twelve. Uh, students was our, was our official count for the year. We put a budget in of two thousand and seventy-four and. We knew it was somewhat conservative. We didn't know really how conservative it was until really this last. Maybe fifteen days. Um, you know, as of July ninth. We were at two thousand and eighty-two kids enrolled, so right at budget on July ninth. So it would have been hard for us to do any hiring at that point. As of July thirtieth, we were at, um, and I'm looking at a different spreadsheet for this, I track all this separately. We were at two thousand and eighteen. But then on yesterday, the day before school and after I created this board report, we were at. Uh, two thousand, two hundred and forty-two students. Um, so that is.
Hold up, let me, so we gained forty students since you made this report?
We gained, I had two thousand and twenty-one, so we've gained twenty students in this report. Um. And this report undercounts Crossroads kids, because they tend to enroll late in the game. So we're, we're undercounting Crossroads, but we also know that we're going to have. Some kids that just, you know, have transferred to other schools that we don't know about yet. We haven't gotten their, um. Their records requests. We know those are going to be there, but, um. You know, we have a hundred and eighty-two kindergartners enrolled right now. That's an active thing to enroll a kindergartner. We're not, we're not, we don't think that any parent is going to actively go out this summer. And enroll their kindergartner here and then forget to tell us that they moved to another school district. So. Hundred and eighty-two kindergartners is like Dr., like Dr. Panega said, that, that's the most I've ever seen here by a long shot. Um, we had a hundred and twenty-five last year, so a hundred and eighty-two this year. I mean, that's, that's some huge growth. And even if you think about, um. First grade, you know, we had a really low kindergarten class last year of a hundred and twenty-five kids, but all of a sudden, when they show up to school this year. It's a hundred and forty-five kids as first graders, so you know, we're, we're seeing growth everywhere. Um, and we're trying to, we're still, we still kind of eased into hiring. Because, you know, there was some noise about. Masks and the governor's order and, and vaccinations and all that stuff. So we, we're, we were still cautious with hiring. But, um, we were, we were able to staff all the classrooms and, you know, we're out in four portables at Mountain Way, which we weren't in last year. We're in portables in the middle school, because they've run out of classroom space. Um, Monte Cristo, I think, is using every classroom. You know, we're, we are in a really good, it's a really good problem to have, to have a lot more kids than you thought you were going to have. Um, so I, I'll, I'll do a deeper dive into enrollment or for our, our official count day is Tuesday. And then Crossroads Count Day is a week later or four days later. So we, we won't really have the actual first count for about another, you know, week or so. Um, but I'll, I'll try and if it's, if it's available in time, I'll get it into the next board packet, an official count. That, um, compares, you know, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, and then where we are for twenty-one, twenty-two. Because it's a great story, you know, we were, we were doing really great things in nineteen, twenty until COVID happened. We finished the year at two thousand and eighty-three students. And then when COVID happened, you know, like everybody else, our enrollment dropped off the cliff. But, you know, we recovered even more than we thought we were going to, we were going to recover this year. So I, I'm. The district's in a great spot enrollment wise and. You know, we have two really small classes in our district, the fourth grade class and the eleventh grade class. So as those go out, our enrollment is just going to get even higher. You know, that's the eleventh grade class is only a hundred and twenty students. So, you know, we have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven classes that are above a hundred and seventy. Beyond that, so. Uh, the future is very bright. It's great that the enrollment is starting at the younger ages. Because then we have those kids for their entire high school career and we can really impact them and they can grow with us. Um. So I, I hope to have a deeper dive into enrollment at the next board, uh, packet.
All right, uh, anything else to add to your report?
I'm still on target to be better than, you know, a million, one eighty-five. And we'll know more about that. We have August, August and September are kind of crazy months financially. We're getting all those final bills paid. And POs closed out and our final grants coming in from the state, our final. Um, food revenue and everything is being counted, but we've, we still think we're on target for the million, one eighty-five.
Are there any questions for, uh, Marshall? Yes, Director Beach?
Just, I just have one. So I, I noticed that it said the total safety net award is, uh, nine ninety-five. I thought that we discussed that it was one point two or one point three. Did something happen?
We're, we're one point three last year.
Uh huh.
We were asking for, I believe, right around one point three. They awarded us one million and seventy-seven thousand in our initial award. And then when they, we have to send a final report in, uh, about, uh, three weeks ago. And they adjusted down for, you know, if a student was no longer needing some form of services and those revenue. The revenues that we had projected didn't hold through, so they reject, they, they reduced us down to nine ninety-five, eight eighty-eight.
So is it, is it something that we could have like done better record keeping? Or is it just that we projected we were going to spend money that we didn't spend?
There's a piece of it that we could have done some more, some better record keeping. I mean, we, we are. We have the ability, if we could prove it, to claim one point eight million dollars in safety net. We, we. We overspent in special ed by one point eight million dollars. But because of the, so in order to claim a student on safety net, you first have to pay thirty-five thousand dollars out of your own pocket. And then any, any cost above thirty-five thousand dollars is what we can claim from safety net. So there's some unknowns of how that's all going to balance out. If you have a lot of students that are right at that thirty-five thousand dollar cost. Well, you're not going to get anything back for them on safety net. If you have students that are costing, yeah, and we had several students that were significantly above that, that we were looking a lot of money on. Um. You know, it's, it's, I, I'll cry until I'm out of tears that this, the funding formula for special ed is. So broken and everybody is aware of it, but nobody knows how to fix it. Um, you know, the fact that we're spending one point eight million dollars that, and we're. Well, really we're spending about a million dollars more than we're getting revenue for, for special ed still.
All right.
And I, I don't know if that answered your question. I mean, it's hard.
It does. It does. I mean, I'm, I'm just sort of trying to digest it, but I appreciate the information. I guess I, I didn't realize that you had to spend thirty-five thousand dollars. Per student in order to begin to claim safety net and so. Right? I mean, i- if you've got kids that, you know, require assistance, but not significant. I can see how that funding model. Doesn't hold.
Right.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate clarification.
I, I had a couple of questions. Okay, Chair, could you jump in?
Go for it, please.
Yeah, so, right, and, and maybe Dr. M, this is something you're planning on talking in your superintendent report, but, you know, obviously. As, um, Director Panega has talked about at the beginning of the meeting, as we've just talked about, you know, the, the enrollment is. Significantly higher than what we expected, which is again, a, a good problem to have. But I guess I want to give the parents, the people that are listening to this, maybe on, online, you know, a, a, a comfortability. About how we're addressing this and still going to provide their kids, um, a stellar education. Um, and, you know, so we could talk about that later, super interim report and stuff like that, but, you know, we, we anticipated kind of something like this happening. So, you know, we, we got more portables and we got portables ready. At Mon Way, at Monte Cristo, to be able to have some classes, yeah, in that area, correct? I mean, we, the, this board, this, your admin team, we had some foresight and some inkling that this might happen. So we did some things to prepare, right?
Right.
Okay, and, and so from a teacher standpoint, which I think goes to the heart of what Director Panega was saying. How are we addressing this from a, a teacher point? This whole, it's, are we still working on figuring that out or?
Um, we've got all the grade school teachers hired and in place and we, we had great candidates, so, um. I'm, I, I'm personally really proud of where all our schools are, but I, you know, spending time at the grade schools today was awesome. And the teachers are amazing and we've got a really great staff there. Uh, the middle school, I believe, is looking for one teacher and I believe the high school is looking for one teacher and that's just to reduce some class sizes. You know, we, we, we're at two thousand and forty-five, two thousand and twenty-two, forty-two enrollment right now. That's probably going to land closer to twenty-two by the time, um. all the drops are calculated. They, they drops happen last, you know, we, we, we know about the ads because they're here. We don't know if a kid, if a student is absent because they're absent or if they're absent because they have gone somewhere else and we just don't know about it yet. So these first four days of school, you know, the, 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 the offices are trying to determine, is this an absence? Or is this a student that has moved away? So they're calling people that aren't there to determine that. We, we saw, you know, we saw a drop of about 70 kids from the first day of school to when we actually counted last year. But a lot of that was COVID related. I think personally with my experience, I think we're gonna land at around 2,200 for our enrollment. And I, I think we're, you know, our class sizes at the grade schools are great. Um, we're mandated to be at an average of 17 to one in the K3 range. Um, and then we have you know, most classes are probably below 28 at the high school and middle school level.
So 2,200, are we gonna have to hire any more teachers, you think?
No, not, no.
Okay. So I just wanna, I, I don't know if that helps you feel a little bit better, Director Panega, is, but I think we're so based on that, I think we're, we did the early work to get the facilities ready. While the, it's a good problem to have, we're still going to be able to hit our mandates as far as class sizes and, and we've got teachers in place and not gonna have to necessarily last hire someone, so I, if I'm, and, and certainly correct me, Marshall, Dr. M, if you think I'm wrong, but I think we're in an okay place, all considering, right?
Well, I, I think we're in a great place and I, I would, I would maybe correct you that if you talk to the principals, I think every one of them's gonna say they have great new teachers this year. I, I really do. I think all the principals are very excited about the staff they were able to hire.
Okay. Thank you for, I just wanted to make, you know, people that are listening, they hear us making a lot of conversations, want them to not freak out and know that, you know, this is, this is a good, we're in a good spot still. That's all I had. Sure.
Thank you. Any other comments, Board? And thank you so much, Marshall. Let's go on to our superintendent report. Dr. Milton.
I have a, a number of items that, uh, cover a variety of topics that I want to share. And I, I think I wanna go back to earlier in the agenda when Director Beach gave a very passionate speech on her why and why she serves and really why she doesn't serve some of those false assumptions and false narratives that I think were thrown around, uh, carelessly. Um, and I, I, I bring that up because, um, come January, I'm coming up on year number 36. And so obviously I've, I've dedicated my career to education and my why, and I know I've shared this before, has been, yes, I made it through this, uh, school. I had some great teachers. But I didn't, uh, didn't know where I was gonna land and there was no talk of careers. There were no explorations. There were no opportunities to, uh, see where, you know, competency type, uh, assessments to point. And so that's been, uh, my why for my career is that we provide a great education for our students and that they have opportunities to know where they want to go afterwards. Now, like everyone, um, you know, oftentimes there are a lot of changing of the mind, uh, but if we don't provide some exploratory, as Mr. Davis is saying, uh, preparatory classes, then we're eliminating those options. And so, um, again, just wanna thank Director Beach for, uh, for that, sharing her why and, and, uh, my why. Um, because it isn't about, uh, you know, prestige or anything like that. It's, it's really about serving our students and bringing out the best, uh, in, in our staff and supporting them. I know some have talked about our, our, uh, opening today, but I wanna go back to welcoming back our staff last week. And I just wanna share a story that, um, I had prepared something that I had shared with the administrators and that was really more on the teaching and learning and academic achievement and professional development. But I realized that, um, our staff was anxious about what was ahead. And so the night before, I ended up changing my keynote entirely so that I was addressing where they were living. And where they were living was concerned about safety and concerned about, uh, belonging and what's going to happen. And, uh, and it, it was received well, I think that, uh, because we, we need to value where our staff is at. And, uh, and again, that, some of the concerns and just some of the nuts and bolts of our return. And I think that and their, uh, the working together with GFEA and PSE, our administrative team, um, our whole, our whole staff, we were able to have a great opening day today, but really I go back to last night with our open houses at three of our schools. And what a success those were. They were well attended. There were safety protocols in place and it all went very well. And I appreciated everyone taking heed of what we need to do because ultimately and I've shared this with you, I've shared it on Facebook Live, I've shared it on our communication. The last thing we wanna do is go back to hybrid or remote learning. And the path to that is not having safety protocols. And so um, I know I've, I've been insistent on that and I'll be the first to say I've taken a very cautious approach. And I'd rather take a cautious approach and allow some things to occur rather than being careless. And then all of a sudden we're shutting down too quickly. The cautious approach, um, we wanna stay in person. Um, and, you know, some of us even came down to last week or in the last couple of weeks of people asking, can I walk my child to, uh, the classroom? And, uh, you know, certainly at the time, we were, uh, we needed to work through that process and, and again, take a cautious approach. Uh, I did reach out to Dr. Spitters from the county and he had given his, his thumbs up on that. I would say that if our number had continued to go up on Monday, like it has in the last, uh, last month, his response might have been different, but we plateaued on Monday. And so it was, uh, and it was a go. Uh, I appreciate, uh, Director Carey contacting me and, uh, just saying, you know, what are, what are some thoughts on this and what has your team been thinking about? And I, I'll tell you, um, our, our principals, uh, at the three schools really came together and talked about how can we pull this off for both the open houses and the first day. And, um, I just give a lot of credit to them because they were very creative and really thinking outside the box and it wasn't how it was in 2019 or 2018 or in previous years. Yet, uh, really ended up being a, a, a real success. And I don't even know if I wanna get into the, um, being on campus and, you know, the access to schools. Absolutely. There's a law that says we, uh, you know, parents can come, but it doesn't mean there aren't rules and, and policies. And in fact, the RCW requires our district uh, or districts to have a policy and we have that, uh, we have that in place. But that really was aside from what we did last night and today. So again, just, uh, wanna congratulate our staff and our, um, our administrators for being able to pull that off. Today was not absolutely perfect. Um, it was, uh, it was great, uh, to see everybody on campus and, uh, again, a lot of smiles and enthusiasm. Uh, but we, we had some bus issues and even late this afternoon, just communicating between parents, Lake Stevens, who provides our busing and our school, one of our schools in particular. There are things that need to be corrected. Um, all students are home safe and sound, but, uh, there was, there were some glitches in buses today. Dr. Panega said brought up our enrollments and I, and I know we talked about it a little bit under Marshall's report. I wanna go back to that for just a minute, um, in that we ended our year last year, you know, about 2,000, a little bit less than 2,000. And all summer, uh, parents are able to enroll their student. And so we followed that number. But we don't see the drops as quickly as we see the ads. And so we've, uh, you know, we saw a steady incline, but it wasn't until really the last couple of weeks that we made that big jump. And I think this is just validation for why we went out and did a demographic report because the demographic, uh, report is really spot on of where we are. And of course, we did that just this summer. And, uh, so I, I think that's going to be a tool we're gonna be able to utilize and, uh, you know, we will continue to have some surprises, but, um, you know, this year was a significant jump. And I wanna say that in my meetings with other Snohomish County superintendents, they're seeing similar jumps in their enrollment. And I just, again, think it's that push from out of the bigger city into uh, more rural communities and smaller towns that's, that's causing that. I wanna go into, uh, our collective bargaining agreements because, uh, I do have that on the agenda tonight. And in fact, later on, uh, earlier, we didn't amend the agenda, but I'll have Director, uh, or Board Chair uh, Butler ask for that in a minute. But there are two collective bargaining agreements that I'm asking the board to approve tonight. The first is with coaches and their, the language in the coaches agreement remains the same. But we've agreed to, uh, a 2% increase in those stipends. And so again, we're being very, uh, I think, good storets with our, uh, with our funding and our, our salary increases this year. And all of the groups have been excellent to work with, understanding our need to, um, to build up that reserve and, and take, take a very cautious, uh, approach this year. The other agreement is with GFEA. And that was one that just got ratified a matter of days ago. And so you don't have that in your packet, all the language, but I wanted to give a an overview of, of some of the items that are in that, uh, that was, that we agree to. The teachers ratified and I would ask for approval tonight. We are looking at a 2.5% on salaries and a one-time $500 stipend. The 2.5% on salaries is, uh, again, very much in the ballpark of what we've been doing with other groups. That's inclusive of the IPD, which is that inflationary factor that isn't required, but certainly is a guideline on, um, on salaries and uh, and then the $500 stipend is just something we just wanted to, um, really recognize the the adaptability that our teachers had last year in going from in-person to well, let's go back two years, in-person to, um, packets to in-person to, uh, zooming, I mean, it was just, it's been a lot. And so it's just sort of a, a, a thank you stipend for uh, for our teachers and, in being able to adjust and, and carrying out that. And, uh, and making that as a successful year as we could. We also, um, agreed on our calendar, which I know you did receive, uh, this evening. And, uh, some of the changes in that include our conferences. We used to run five half-day conferences in elementary in the fall and five in the spring. And in talking with GFEA, it's tough to get a whole lot of learning in a half-day. And so we went to two days, two full days instead of five half-days. And, uh, and, and so I appreciated that. We also, um, agreed that new teacher orientation and, and boy, this was a, a real win this year with the number of new teachers we had. Uh, we increased the number of days from two to four. And, um, that's something that in my previous districts, we always had a, a greater number of days because there are so many things to go through. And, uh, so I, I appreciate their agreement on that. There are some other minor language issues that, uh, are either required by law or updates to uh, just to update the CBA. Uh, but that's really, those were the, the money issues on, on both the coaching and the, and the GFEA. Typically, when we, once that association ratifies it, they take it. They go back and they type up the new one. We just, they just ratified the other day. We also have a payroll cutoff in order to reflect those changes, uh, coming up. And typically that's around the ninth or 10th of September. So we don't have another time before that to, uh, to approve. So I would ask, um, that later on in our agenda. Uh, the last thing I wanna share, well, yeah, the last thing I wanna share, and I'll share my screen. This is the preview of our new website. And, uh, I can't tell you how excited we are. I also can't thank Melanie enough for really spearheading this and getting so much of this in place. But let me just show you this. As soon as you open the website, this is what happens.
I'll be honest with you, some of the best students I've ever had are here. It just, you know, I like this small town. I, I like, I like the communities.
And there's really a lot of beauty here. I mean, Granite Falls is nestled in one of the most beautiful areas.
Welcome to Saffa PE. You don't have that view in other places, you know, so that's, that's a special gift.
I used to work in a neighboring district and we moved here 20 years ago.
I'll stop there, but I just wanna share that if you remember, um, over, over a year ago, year and a half ago, we had a video about Granite Falls. This is all pre-COVID. And, uh, it's exciting to finally unveil this video and it's about five minutes long. But as soon as you open this, this is what happens. They get to see, uh, this, this great, uh, video. So the family that is moving into this area and they might be looking, do I go to Arlington? Do I go to Lake Stevens? Oftentimes they look at the area school district websites and see, okay, what will they have to offer? And so when this comes on, someone's, they, they get an immediate five-minute overview of what our district is all about. The, um, uh, Mr. Davis mentioned earlier that he'll have his own, his own tab for CTE or CT will have its own tab. So when you go to, uh, one of the links up above and you can see, go to our district, go to our departments, they'll have their own link and it'll be totally devoted to CTE. And then when we go to school board, just some, uh, bios here about each of you. But on the side, resources both for for you, for our community, as well as for those who, let's say, how to become a school board member. How do you communicate with the board? Board agendas and minutes and board policies. So this has been really a passion of Melanie's as well as mine to get, get a website that's intuitive, that is very user friendly. What's exciting is last week, when we had our teachers come in, one of our workshops on professional development day was to train on Blackboard because we want each teacher to have their own site where that they've, at a minimum, they might have a picture, but they'll have a little bio about themselves. But they're going to be those teachers that go even more and put so much information and resources on for their students and their family. Let's see, Melanie, are there some other items that you wanted to highlight?
So you can find a CTE link, it's going to be under the our schools. So I'm back on the main page. You'll see the tab under the logo that says our district and then our schools. And the CTE is under that tab because it's its own website, not webpage. So website means that we're going to break down each pathway and really do an extensive job at putting that information out there so families can really view the different pathways and offerings. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that piece because it's, it'll be way bigger than just a page. And basically we also have a staff intranet. You'll notice there's no staff tab on that because now all that staff stuff, stuff that just pertains to staff is going to be on our internal intranet, do not confuse.
This, and our plan is for this to go live tomorrow. And so we're hoping by noon, this will be up and going. And so shout out to Dan for making that happen, working with Melanie. One of the things that we want to post that has been a topic throughout the state and even locally is on our sex ed curriculum. And last week we had talked about posting that this week. And with the transition to our new website, we just decided to wait until this goes live tomorrow. And so information on that will be there tomorrow. And that's my report. Any questions for Dr. Middleton or?
I have something, surprise, surprise. So just, I just wanted to touch on two things real quick. Well, hopefully I'll make it as quick as possible that Dr. M had talked about in his, in his report today. And typically I don't, I try to refrain from commenting on, on, on things that are on Facebook. Just because it's, it seems, you know, you're, you're not necessarily talking to the person or the people that are commenting or sharing it. But you know, this is really my only opportunity to speak to the district as a whole. So relative to the sex ed piece, there was a, there was a book or a curriculum that was handed out. I guess to members that were at the rally, the masked rally previous to the last board meeting of a curriculum called, it's perfectly normal. Then I certainly, I, it was purported whether intentionally or unintentionally that this was a curriculum that we were either teaching or going to teach or would be teaching or something along those lines. And you know, that is, there's nothing I could say about that other than it's completely false. And it's false at best, misleading and an intentional misdirection at, at worst. Our, I appreciate you, Dr. Middleton, posting our curriculum. Our curriculum actually didn't even change, didn't change with the recent passing of the comprehensive sex ed bill that was voted on and approved by the, the people of Washington state. And this curriculum was never something that, that, that would or is being taught in our schools. And it's, it's really troubling to me that, that it was purported as such. And I get it, we're, we're in an election time and you know, I guess every story has to have a villain and you know, and a good guy that's going to save the day. But I, if, if parents saw that or concerned by that, as I absolutely was also, it's certainly not the truth. And then I wanted to expand a little bit more, Dr. M, I appreciate you touching on that piece relative to admission to the, the schools and kind of our, our really thoughtful way of kind of moving through that. Because again, on Facebook, there's, there's this, there's, there's a narrative that, that this outcome was derived by, you know, parents complaining or kind of forcing our hand in that. And you know, the relative to parents, you know, had, can access building at any time for any reason. And, and if okay, I just wanted to read just a quick couple excerpts from our, our legal, our, our legal representation buzz porter. He says, yes, you are okay to prohibit parents from entering school during the school year. Non-employees and other visitors without a business necessity do not have a legal right to enter schools. All the schools are public property. This is public property set aside for a specific educational purpose. We don't let the general public in our military bases or roam around the back rooms of post offices either, even though that is public property too. There are however, a few statutes that may require us to give access to school property of parents in narrow circumstances. The first exception, IEP and other special ed. Second statute that provides limitation, excepting the general rule is RCW 28A 605020. Every school district board of directors shall, after following established procedure, adopt a policy assuring parents access to their child's classroom and/or school sponsored activities for purposes of observing class procedure, teaching material and class conduct, provided that such observation shall not disrupt the classroom procedure or learning activity. Pursuant to that statute, Granite Falls adopted policy and procedure 4035. This is consistent with the procedure the district had bargained with GFEA in section 8.3 of the CBA. So I just say all those things to say, I mean, again, I said before, I'll say it again. We desperately want and need parents involved in their educational future of their kids. And, and we, we want our buildings to be welcoming to all people. However, we are in the middle of, of a, of a health crisis right now. So we are making decisions based upon feedback that Dr. M is getting from health experts and those types of things. So you know, there's, there, there isn't a legal requirement that will, that anyone can walk into a building at any time. And you know, that, that availability of, of able to access the building is going to change slightly based on the feedback that we're, we're getting from health directors. And it's not due to, you know, an email chain or, or people yelling or, you know, kind of forcing our hand. Because again, we're going to do what's best for students. So I, I just wanted to expand a little bit more on that to just hopefully battle those, those two false narratives that are out there.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Milton? All right. Thank you, Dr. Milton. Item three D board reports, I'm going to start with WIAA.
Thank you. I do have a little bit longer report because I gave me a chance to, to talk to yesterday before the open houses earlier in the afternoon. I had a chance to talk to Michael Maynor, who is the new athletic director and assistant principal at the high school. It was great. We talked briefly before, but before this report tonight that we really go into some things. So I have some info. The first thing we have football, we have about 40 players and we're still welcoming new players. And the first game is at Fort Townsend. Couple of days from now, Friday, taking the ferry over there. And the, so that, that'll happen in the, the week after, a week from this Friday is our first home game, Friday Harbor. Hopefully we'll get a good turnout for that. So it's really going to be a lot like it was two years ago, like normal, whatever. The, but one thing he wanted me to emphasize and some, some of the rest, you may have heard about this. WIAA is pushing, it's called esports and it's computer. And it's, I don't know enough about it, but I'm, I know a lot more than I did. And WIAA is pushing this. It's not a matter of stronger, faster. You know, brain power and a lot, and of course, the kids are all into the computers. And I think it has some real possibilities. I'll try to get more information once it gets going. And like I say, some of you may know more about it. But there's a lot of interest. The, we're going to try to go with all false, false sports. And it looks like there's going to be cross country. And we are hosting two meets here in Granite. The mountain loop invitational. And Steve Lance is the coach. And then the, the conference championship, our conference will be in Granite also. I will keep, you know, posted on that. The boys and girls. There's on, on cross country right now, there's 12 to 13 boys out right now and seven girls. And girls volleyball and soccer. And anyway, that looks like all of these sports are going to go, you know, be activated. And then we'll see as each season goes. But this was encouraging to me because last year, sports was in WIAA. They struggled and it really did struggle until trying to get these sports in, in the spring. We, it's like we did the whole sports season from March, March on. I don't want to exaggerate that. But hearing about the, this morning and the enthusiasm, the elementary schools, it just really, and sports is, is a big part of that. So the, Michael admitted that he will attend. He'll be on the bus to Fort Townsend on Friday. I admitted that I wouldn't be on that one, but I will be here a week from now for when Friday Harbor comes over. So Michael is really enthusiastic guy. And he's happy to be here and everything. It's so, so hopefully the athletic stuff will pick up. I know they did a thing with their agreement. The coaches have their own group. So I just hope it really, really goes strong. And I, I'm, I'm going to be active around until, I don't know, December at the latest. But I think that's good news. Last year was a struggle. And so, and he and John, who is, I try to get the pronunciations right on this, but nicely. And I talked to, at another occasion, I talked to, to John for about 30 minutes. But they actually worked together in Florida at one time. And so I feel excited about it. So that's all I have and I don't have a lot of detail. The, Michael got this at a meeting, I think, the last, last Friday or yeah, probably last Friday. They, they had a meeting. And so I, I think it's looking up.
Thank you, Dr. Panega. Any questions, Dr. Panega? All right, move on to legislative reports, Carl.
Yeah, so I attended a really good presentation from OSPI and WASDA on SCAP. And SCAP stands for the School Assistance Construction, School Construction Assistance Program, which is administered by OSPI and provides funding assistance to school districts that are undertaking a major new construction or modernization project. And this was me and attended by our representative Steele, Representative Theringer, as well as Tyler Munch from OSPI. Really great, timely presentation based on kind of all the things that we're talking about tonight. We've got an enrollment that is larger than we expected, but still puts us in a good place. We've done a demographic study that shows some consistent growth over the, the next coming years. I think we're, we're talking about putting together, you know, some sort of group to kind of digest that demographic committee, kind of digest that demographic study and kind of make some recommendations on, you know, growth and stuff for the district. But, and how we accommodate that growth, how that growth, you know, enhances and, and the educational opportunities and the environment that we have in Granite Falls School District. So it was, it was really good. So I, I kind of get a, a good understanding of SCAP. They, the representatives talked about kind of their concerns relative to school funding and how some districts struggle with that, with the, the bond passing. And there was a good spreadsheet that was provided that kind of shows the amount because of the 60% super majority that's currently required. You know, how many districts went after bonds? How many of those bonds passed? How many would they pass? Or was just a simple majority, you know, discussion there. So it was good to kind of talk about that, get feedback from our, our legislative representatives that were on that call. So there is another WASDA presentation that's coming. I want to say it is next week that I'll be attending to, that will talk about, I believe it's going to go over sped funding again. I'm looking it up right now. Let's see here, hold on. It is September 14th now, oh, and it's discussing the general assembly. That's coming up. That's, that's pivoted from, if you guys didn't know, general assembly was going to be held in person in Spokane. And they've recently transitioned that to a online format like they did last year. And I think they're going to push it back to October or something along those lines. So I think that's all I got right now.
Any questions for Dr. Carrick? All right, thank you. Community report, Director Green.
Um, I don't really have anything this evening now. I was on the Granite Falls website. They haven't announced for railroad days yet and hopefully we'll be hearing soon.
Thank you. All right, before we get to the floor, I would like to make a motion that we add an agenda item under new business six C. The coaches contract.
I will second that motion.
Okay, so motion, second, real quick, we needed to add this, just a quick discussion, explain what it is. We needed to add this, get this approved. It's exactly what Dr. M talked about in his board report. So that's why we're adding it to the agenda. Any other questions about the motion? Put them all in favor.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, perfect. That carries unanimous. All right, item four, items from the floor. All right, as always, we have speakers and we're going to read our script as it works or that's script, description. The Granite Falls School Board welcomes the opportunity here for public comments and allows time for this purpose at each regular session meeting under items from the floor. In the interest of time, order and respect to others, comments will be limited to five minutes or less. Personal matters, i.e. complaints or charges about employees are not permissible during items from the floor. Such issues are to be addressed to the principal of the school or the superintendent in writing. The board superintendent or district personnel do not engage in direct conversation and give feedback during the meeting. However, board members may ask clarifying questions regarding the subject matter exclusively. The board president may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it becomes too lengthy, lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant or concerning a legal matter. Questions or comments from those addressing the board may be referred to superintendent or staff to follow up at a later date if needed. In essence, board action and the discussion is limited to previously published agenda topics. This limitation is based on the legal requirements set forth in RCW 4230. Please also refer to the policies in the 1000th Series addressing the Granite Falls School District Board of Directors. All right, so we have had several people sign up, uh, prior to the meeting to, uh, have discuss, uh, board comments. I'm sorry, uh, item from the floor. Our first is, uh, Carly Kincaid. Uh, so we are going to unmute you, Carly, um, for your comments. You have five minutes allotted. I have a timer in front of me. We have one to be on the screen. I don't know if you have one as well, Melanie. Okay, all right, I've got the timeframe except for five minutes. Um, and you are muted, Carly, just, you, you just want to test real quick. It's not kind of against your time.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep, you're perfect. All right, so as soon as you start, I'm going to start the timer.
Give a one minute warning.
Yeah, oh, and, and I'll give you a one minute warning. So, everybody.
Um, like you said, my name is Carly Kincaid. And as some of you know, I'm one of the candidates running for school board, but that's not why I'm here. I've asked to speak here today to offer you some insight into the minds of your community and to be an advocate for students, parents, teachers, and staff. As we've all seen, there's been a tremendous amount of sign waving, protesting, and other demonstrations lately at school board meetings across the state. And a lot of the school boards have taken great offense to this or have taken this personally and have gone on to defend why they allow certain policies to be implemented in their schools. But I want to assure you that these protests aren't for you. They aren't about you. We understand, and I've seen the letter that Reichdahl sent out last week to superintendents and school boards, reiterating that you will lose funding if you don't obey his and Inslee's commands. And we get it. But here's the problem. Just because you have to accept these decrees doesn't mean you have to do so silently. You see, we parents, we have no one fighting for us. We are fighting for our children alone. Our rights as parents are slowly being removed and there is no one standing up for us. There is no one standing up and fighting for the rights of our children. There is no one standing up for the rights of your staff or your teachers, not even the teachers' union. They've turned their backs on the teachers' personal rights and didn't even put up an ounce of a fight. So now you have all these people whose rights are being stripped of them and there is no one to fight for them. So they must fight for themselves. They are crying out for you to do what you were elected to do and to stand up for those people, to write letters to Reichdahl and OSBI, the governor, legislature, anyone who will listen, and tell them that what they are doing is wrong. That doesn't mean that you don't abide by the rules. It just means that you don't go down silently. Because if they take away one right, they slowly will chip away at all the others. So go out into your community, into the districts who voted you into these positions, who you vowed to represent and stand up for them. Our parental rights are at stake, not just in COVID matters, but across all board. Speaking of parental rights, I did want to show my appreciation that after parents stood up and said something, that you acknowledge their rights according to the ESSA, which if you don't know what that is, it's the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is the nation's national education law. And under the ESSA, it requires schools to offer opportunities to visit, volunteer, participate in children's classes, and observe classroom activities. Um, and also the RCW that Carl mentioned before, 28A 605020. And not just any old people, but parents were able to walk their kids into the first day of school today. It was a bit of a cluster, it was a little bit chaotic, but now you can see just how many people got in line to do that and how much that really meant to families. Carl mentioned earlier in the meeting tonight that parents, uh, really want, or that you guys really want parents to be involved. And parents desperately want to be involved. But when they are alienated or treated like they are the enemy, they don't want to be involved anymore. And what I mean by that is, is prior to being able, being allowed to walk into the first day of school, we were given, a notice that parents were not allowed to be in the schools, were not allowed to walk their children into the first day of school, uh, in order to keep the children and the staff safe. That gave children the idea that their parents were unsafe. And it was incredibly offensive to parents, um, who just wanted to walk their poor children in on the first day of school. And so I encourage you guys to work on your wording communications because it really alienates parents and makes them feel worthless. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to say that I was pleased to hear Dr. Wilson in his book live last week, saying the words that politics don't belong in schools. And I urge you all to abide by that across all facets. I urge you to put politics and clout aside and do what you were voted in to do, to represent your districts, to get out and meet, to get out and meet the people who voted you into these positions and to stand up for their children, their teachers, the district staff, and parents. Be brave and be bold and be unafraid. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. I appreciate that. Um, our next speaker is David, uh, are you here? I don't see him unless he's on someone else's. Do you recognize his name for David?
No, I don't see David.
Okay, so it doesn't look though David is here. Um, Kirk Parker, uh, I see you are here. Could we, um, I assume Kirk is Kirk Parker. I'm assuming that's correct. Uh, Dan, if you could unmute Kirk. Kirk, do you want to test the sound real quick for us?
There we go. Am I on?
Yeah, we can hear you just perfect. All right, uh, do you understand the five minutes? And I'll give you a one minute warning?
Yes, that's fine.
All right, go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Last board meeting, I was addressing the board with the possibility of communism, um, coming into the schools. And my intent behind that to make sure that critical race theory is not producing some of the things that, um, produces communism. I've taken a good, long look into it. And I want to present some things for you today to be able to take a look at, consider, and see if Senate Bill 5044, which is the one mandated for one teacher day a year, that critical race theory is not being introduced. So I'll begin with a, uh, a quote from Nikita Khrushchev. "America will fall without ever firing a shot. You cannot expect Americans to choose communism over capitalism, but you can feed them small doses of socialism until they awaken one day and find they have communism." And I think you're going to find and see with what I have to present, that that has happened in several societies and countries around the world. And we can see that starting to creep in, in our society today. And I want to make sure that you hear me, that, that we need to take precautions and make sure that critical race theory in our teachings is not happening with, with, within our district. For first off, um, the roots of critical race theory, Marx, it was a Marxist shootout. It was basically a theory of class struggle. It was called critical theory. It was where one class was pitted against another class to support workers, um, red, let worker red led revolutions. The German Socialist Party added race to critical theory. It encouraged oppressed over to overthrow the oppressors. After World War One or World War Two, excuse me, the Frankfurt School ran with the racial struggles and victimhood. The idea of, of oppressor race in Germany was the Aryans being the oppressed and the oppressor race were the Jewish people. And you can kind of see, see where that led. I had the opportunity to talk to my brother-in-law who came from Chile in the early seventies. And the same thing happened there and I was able to confirm a lot of what I had taken a look at. Oppressor versus oppressed is a classic Marxist, classic Marxism that creates devastating effects and creating hostile groups and ethnic, ethnic violence. CRT is so poisonous that the end game basically, um, punishes and it is basically very polarizing. In Chile, the oppressed were the working class. It went into the colleges. The left-wing element of the Democratic Constitution leaders, uh, basically, um, went to the socialist leadings. And the three parties running, basically what happened was you had the worker class versus the, the leading class. And that was what was pitted against each other. In Venezuela, it was basically created as a racial problem. Oppressor and oppressed. Venezuela faced, um, basically was led to communist, to fascist, um, to a style of government. And we can see how that was working out. The same types of things play out. The Sandinistas of Nicaragua, we can see what happened in Germany and the same thing happened in Russia during the takeover. With 5044, when you take a look at how different districts had the opportunity to talk to the superintendent of Thank you. Their version was to be able to make it, take it instructional so that there is equity and equality. Fifth, uh, in the fifth grade class, you have a 10th grade reader, a first grade reader, you have somebody from different culture. How do you handle those equitably? In Highline, you had 5044 and it was introduced as critical race theory. The teachers there that posted basically saw, saw it as very division. It was very divisionary. And so my, what I'm asking you in the district is to take a very close look at this. Okay, and see that we are not creating that division ourselves, that we're using 5044 to help students, not to create division. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kirk. I appreciate that. All right. Thank you so much. So moving on in our agenda, item five, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. Moving on to item six, new business. We have, uh, item six, eight, 2020, sorry, 2021 dash 22, GFEA contract approval.
Are we in discussion?
Yeah, in discussion on that. Sorry, yeah, we, in the discussion.
Yeah, Dr. M, just clarify for me. I know we need, we don't have it in the packet. Items like the, um, I, because I imagine, as you said, that there's still some, some items being worked out, but, um, are we going to, if we prove it now, there's no ability for us to look at that? Not that I, I think that we'd have any issue with it. Also, how are we? I understand that one of the things that we're negotiating with GFEA is the vaccine mandate and, and potential separation, like what that financially, my understanding right, is that going to be a part of this contract too?
That's not part of the, uh, agreement. That would be part of a MOU or, uh, really, um, what we've been doing through COVID is having a ongoing working document as decisions have had, uh, need to be made, but that is not part of the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. So I just, I, I just want to make, I understand from a timing standpoint, we have to prove it tonight. I'm certainly open to that, but really the only change is, is the, the stipend, the 2.5% calendar that you've talked about. I mean, are there any other, you know, how, as they say, the devil's in the details. Is there any other terms for stuff that we need?
No, any substantive changes? No, are there some minor ones, like we've increased the sub-rate? You know, again, we're, we're getting in line with state law on, uh, different types of leaves that are available. But, uh, the, these are the substantive items, the 2.5, uh, in our calendar and, um, are, um, increasing number of days per orientation.
And has, uh, has the GFEA ratified this?
They have, they just ratified the other day and now bringing it to you and, uh, would ask for your approval.
Okay. Director, oh, sorry, that's.
No, I can reach, but.
I, I can't tell Director Butler if you can see me or not, because I can't see you. So just out of curiosity, since you mentioned it, what is the, the sub-rate in the contract?
And I believe we've moved it up to $165 a day.
Okay, and then, and it was the other thing you said, different types of leave in, in alignment with legal requirements? Is it like FMLA or something like that?
Yeah, PM, okay. PMFL.
FMLA.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just double checking.
We just tidying things up. Are there no other conversations I'm willing to accept the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ratification of the 2122 GFEA district CPA.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Motion and second is in place. Uh, it's called for vote, all in favor? Any actually, um, is there anyone who would like to, uh, recuse himself? I should ask that first. Don't we have to have someone take himself out?
Yeah, Director Green.
Yeah, I, I don't want to mess it up again. Before I take a vote, actually, let's, you're stating, that's what it is. Okay, perfect. Okay, so we got, or I, any abstaining?
I abstain.
All right, and any no? Perfect, all right, thank you. I had to get that right. All right, uh, moving on to item six, the redistricting overview.
In the packet, we included information because at the end of, or when the census is concluded every 10 years, the, um, the county looks at our, the boundaries of each, uh, area that you represent. And as you saw in the documentation, District One has grown tremendously and they have many more people than the other districts. Ideally, it would be to have the same number of, of voters or constituents in each of those areas. So we would work with the county on uh, realigning those districts. This has no impact on the election because they ask for the current board members as well as the candidate's address. They would take that and then really manipulate the line. So each, I believe in the packet, it's about 2,500 people in each area. Or was it a little bit more? I don't have it right in front of me. And make it a little bit more, uh, more even, uh, among each district.
Yeah, if I understand, you need to be within 5% of each other.
That's right. Yeah, the, the goal is yes, to be within 5%. And you can see that, uh, District One, I believe, was 20 plus.
24% about.
So, um, we could leave it as is and call it good, or the recommendation from the county is for them to look at that a little bit more closely and come back. Uh, I don't have a cost to that, but it's a minimal cost with the county to, um, to redistrict and again, take everyone's address into account.
You know, that addresses my one question of how it would affect the election and current board, but it, it sounds like they have a process in place.
That's right.
For that.
Yeah.
Um, so do you need action on this tonight? That's one of my questions I had.
They were, I, yeah, they were looking for board approval.
Looking for a motion or just census?
Uh, motion.
Motion, okay. All right, well, any other questions?
So do we know, uh, how those lines are going to be redrawn? Because you, you had two maps in here and I couldn't figure out, the second map is showing me the redrawn lines or not?
No, it's not. I think the second map is just a larger version of the first one. So it's really, if you, yeah, the, the, those maps don't represent any changes. They're the same, same map. One is just blown out, uh, blown up a little bit more.
So what do we, clarify what we're approving tonight? Because I apologize, I, I don't, are we, are they going to?
It's giving permission to the county demographer to redraw these lines uh, so that District One, or all districts would be within 5% of each other in terms of population.
So do we, do they just do that arbitrarily? We can no get no say, or does that come back to the board and we go, hey, we have an issue with that? I'm not even sure what issue we would have with that. I guess I'm just, I'm, 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 from what I'm hearing, we approve someone else to do something, maybe that then we don't have any other say in, and we just get it and we have to live with it. I'm, that makes me just a little uneasy.
Well, from what I understand, that's the way it is. But what is it, what is it, Melanie? For approval? Okay, all right, so apparently it does come back to us for, for final approval.
That makes me feel that, that alleviates that concern, then. I just wanted to have a voice in that. So, yeah. I don't have any other questions.
Board, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve stage two of the realignment. Is that the motion?
Yes, yeah, motion was made, um, second?
I'll second that since it's my district.
Motion's been made and seconded. All right, all in favor? I, and any opposed? All right, uh, moving on to item six, C, uh, the coaches' contract.
I think we need to amend it. We need to add this as a formal.
Already did.
Okay, great, okay, excellent, thank you.
Yeah, it's already been done.
All right, yeah, so the coaches' contract. Yeah, so the coach's contract language is all the same. It's just the two percent increase on the stipends for the coaches.
Yeah. All right, any other comments or questions, board?
I imagine an MOU is gonna be done with them related to the vaccine and stuff like that, too. That will come in front of the board. Yeah, okay.
Any more comments or questions? It's not a one to entertain a motion.
I would make the motion. I just have to go look at the agenda on the other screen.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, that's right. Somebody else has to do it.
I make a motion, we accept the coaches' contract.
I'll second that.
I'll second your motion.
Director Beach.
I, I think, all right, motions have been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? All right, thank you. Uh, we have a consent agenda. There were some additions that Melanie did email out. Any comments or questions about consent agenda or the additions? All right, if not, I'm willing to entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the additions.
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with the additions that were emailed on September first by Melanie Freeman.
All right, motion's been made. Uh, can I get a second?
Second that.
Dave's got that one.
They do well. Motion's made and seconded. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and any opposed? Not seeing any passes. All right. We're gonna adjourn our meeting. It is now seven, I'm sorry, eight thirty-two. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here.
Thank you.